6:30, we will call the meeting to order please with the point of release.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming tonight. We will call Superintendent Arson.
Oh.
Yes.
Ody.
Yep.
Saxor. Phil Combs. Scott. You have more to mention.
Hmm? Okay. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests for our review tonight. That takes us to approval of the board minutes from our regular meetings on September fourteenth and September twenty-eighth. If there are no concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Send it again.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? opposed? Motion passes. I didn't see anyone on the agenda for community input tonight, so that takes our, takes us to financial items, bills and claims.
I think you have a chair. Out of this night for, uh, this evening for financial items underneath the invoice listings, I spoke with, uh, this manager, one more just had a few items that we wanted to note. Uh, page one, the Spargo Elementary Architecture Fee, you can find, um, with Architecture Incorporated. Here, that's one of, uh, the mini payments to them for the approximately half million dollars in, uh, architecture fees associated with that new construction project. Uh, on page four, there are a variety of items listed, uh, for teach well solutions. Teach well provides us with a variety of services. From general, general education alternative school, uh, to, um, special education program, et cetera. Uh, so they are a provider for many of those things. It's co-op expenses that, uh, we just note. On page seven, there's a large amount of money going to innovative office solutions. We note that forecovering was a substantial, uh, phased project around our best elementary as well as Brandon Elementary. So those are two large items that were included within the five-year plan that, um, have been completed. On page eleven, want to note, a large payment to North Central Bus Sales. Uh, those are two brand new school buses. Again, outlined in our five-year plan and our annual budget, uh, but we just received them now. Typically, we, we receive those in the beginning of August. They were delayed due to the COVID pandemic. So those are two brand new school buses that will be put into, uh, put into action, uh, as we move forward. On page twelve, I would highlight, um, one point one million dollar payment, Pesci Construction. That's our sixth payment on our new elementary school project. Those are the invoices that I had for you. Uh, in terms of advanced payments, there are, um, about five thousand seven hundred dollars of advanced payments. Outline, uh, pay vouchers. There are two tabs on pay vouchers for the month of October. I would note, um, the, uh, normal tab that you typically would see, uh, amounting to about forty-seven thousand dollars. And then the second tab is an amount of, uh, blue over twenty-one thousand dollars. That is for the, uh, summer planning that our, uh, non-twelve-month principals participated in for our pandemic response plan. Child nutrition invoices, uh, total one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars and change. With that, I'd certainly entertain any questions that you have.
Chair. Chair, I've got just a couple of questions. Um, I do not know what page it is, but reading the bus lines, we've, we've, um, paid them for some services to athletic and dance and cheer. My question is, how far out do we have to go before we use, uh, reading for, uh, services?
I think it's typically, uh, further than approximately sixty miles is, uh, what we generally charter out. But we would also charter out in the event that, uh, we don't have buses available because of, um, other events. But I think the general rule of thumb would be about sixty miles further, um, gets us, uh, gets us a charter, uh, bus. Or in the event that we don't have buses available because we have multiple activities going on in close proximity to Brandon. We don't have a bus and a driver, um, for the purpose of, uh, transporting our kids.
And then another question I have is with moved electric. It says, um, high school videos board installation. Well, is that paid by us, but we will be reimbursed by the, uh, um, booster club?
Um, yes. One story, Chair. Does any, um, cost associated with, uh, the video board at the outdoor complex is, uh, either paid or reimbursed by the Brandon Valley Booster Club?
Okay.
Any other questions tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims as presented, please.
Move. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you. My answer report, Superintendent Arson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Cash report, um, just want to note, uh, what we have is total, uh, total for what you'll come for is a little over twenty-five million. We have about five and a half million dollars in, um, distributions, end of month balance, uh, nineteen million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Uh, all of that can be found within the total tab here located within the cash, uh, cash report. On the next page, uh, you have monthly receipts, uh, in the amount of, I'll get there, uh, two point two million and change outlined. The investment report is also outlined on the next page. You can see our various, uh, various investments. Um, a large obviously is the bond issue that, uh, since that US Treasury amount. Payroll and benefits. I would note that this is going to be your, uh, first standardized monthly payroll and, uh, benefits report for the, for the upcoming school year. So, um, the increase in payroll and benefits amount in comparison to what you saw last year, um, at this time would be the new staff that you hired, as well as the salary and wage increases that, um, that we gave to our, our respective employees. Revenue and expense report listed there for your review. Uh, there is no food service financial statement, uh, this month. Would note that we have a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and change coming for others in our trust agency. And then the, uh, last page here is your capital projects financial statement for our new elementary school. Uh, we've known we are, um, again, running, uh, running on, on time, on budget with that project at this time. Uh, with that, certainly entertain any questions you have on financial report.
Chair, none other than a motion to approve the financial report as presented, please.
Uh-oh. Listen.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Close. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our general business items. Looks like the first one on there is administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Arson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll work through these this evening. I have just a couple of items to, uh, to note. You guys have been updated on the, uh, construction timeline. Uh, we note that that timeline continues, uh, continues on schedule, um, as previously mentioned. Our staffing timeline, uh, we have posted those positions internally. Um, I would say we have strong interest. So it's, um, it's very, uh, very positive to note that we will have, um, some Brandon, some current Brandon Valley staff, a nice mix, uh, down there, um, in terms of, uh, individuals who are, who have some understanding of our culture and climate. So appreciate individuals that are willing us to, uh, seek to transfer to our new elementary school. District ten twenty-five legislative breakfast. I would ask each of all the board members to, uh, just note in their calendar, uh, Wednesday, December ninth at seven thirty AM. A legislative breakfast. I would note that, uh, that is subject to changes. We'll wait till after the election to invite, um, all of those elected representatives. But just put that in there, tentatively note, uh, the date and time. Currently, we're in the process of, uh, developing our academic, uh, calendar for next school year. We have some initial drafts. Uh, we've looked throughout the regular process involving the administrative council, teacher aides, on council, classified council. Uh, tentatively, I would anticipate bringing to you an initial presentation, uh, on the first meeting in January and then adoption at our second meeting in January. Today, we have inserts for staff, certainly appreciate the great work that they are doing, um, and our efforts provide, uh, personalized and responsive professional development. Uh, more important now than ever. So we engage in a lot of, uh, different professional activities today, that surround, uh, supporting students that are in distant learning or requiring a quarantine, uh, some of our technology platforms, et cetera. So appreciate their work today. Twenty-first is the end of our first quarter. There's no school on November eleventh, Veterans Day. Thanksgiving break again runs Wednesday through Friday, uh, in November. We have a two-hour early to Sinsel on December twenty-third and near break runs from that date through January third. We resume school on Monday, January fourth. In addition, I would just highlight, um, the boundary line committee process and where we currently are, uh, in that process. I would note that we, uh, we work to minimize student impact, proactively manage student growth and establish boundaries aligned to future growth. Undoubtedly, there will be impact on students anytime you have a new facility, um, and you move people's residences out of their current attendance zone into a new attendance zone. There will be impact, but we certainly work to minimize that impact. Uh, the committee really worked with two major, uh, two major goals. Uh, ultimately, we need to develop, to develop elementary boundaries for next school year, as well as develop a preliminary boundary concept for BD Vision twenty-four, and that was really important for us to do as we worked out, to really put some detail to BD Vision twenty-fourty. And also provide our, uh, patrons and our families with, um, some details in terms of how we anticipate that looking and how that process will run as smoothly as possible and minimize student impact over the course of the next twenty years. Good to see the process overview in terms of, um, how we are, how we are working through our boundary line adoption. Uh, we've had our committee meetings. We met with our Fred Assen PTA, uh, the Board Transportation Committee has looked and reviewed those, uh, recommended boundary lines. We distributed an informational video and, uh, email to all of our families, uh, here last week, providing them with an update on what those boundary lines, recommended boundary lines are, as well as the timeline and the process. Uh, you guys here today are receiving a report. I would note there's an informational meeting for families, uh, on, uh, the fifteenth here at, uh, the, uh, Cofrey Garden Center at six PM. Uh, again, you guys will receive another report at our next, uh, next meeting in October, and we would seek for potential approval of the recommended boundary lines in November. That would give us ultimately the opportunity to communicate with those families that are impacted and outline, uh, the processes associated with such impact. Would note that there's been a ton of prior research planning preparation that has gone into the creation of our recommended boundary lines. We collaborate with the municipalities and the school district, annually meeting with them, uh, discussing infrastructure plans, developments, projects, um, land use plans, et cetera. Uh, we continue to communicate with developers regarding current and upcoming projects, um, and then also, uh, in terms of projects, the timeline of current projects, as well as the timeline of new projects. Uh, we work with our infrastructure and, uh, residential developments in terms of site tours and reviews. Uh, we've had group trips to, um, tour Veterans Parkway, uh, every year since it started. And I would tell you that, um, not only is the most expensive road project in South Dakota history, it is one of the, uh, most incredible things I've ever personally witnessed in terms of construction. It is, it really is, uh, an incredible feat with the accomplishments of Veterans Parkway. So that's an example of the site tour that we conduct. Uh, and all of this really stems from the two thousand eighteen Facility Review Committee process. Again, that was a collaborative process, a large group, um, that, that had stakeholders from all communities and buildings. And that really has led us to the development of our current recommended boundaries with the addition of our new elementary school. Uh, you can note the communication timeline to our families. Uh, we've allowed to put, uh, put information in our newspaper, communicated with our PTAs, sent out that video, uh, email and update, healthy informational meeting. We'll certainly update our, uh, families after the boundary lines are formally approved. And then after that, all of those communications, any family that is impacted, uh, by the boundary line change will receive a communication, uh, via postal mail, outlining the change, the timeline and the process. In the event that they want their child, uh, to open enrollment, uh, the attendance center that they're in this year, or if they have a third grader, that is guaranteed an enrollment at their attendance center. Uh, this year, uh, they can, uh, find all the details outlined in that respective, uh, communication. Would note that navigating student enrollments impacted by boundary line change, uh, there are two real key things that I think are important for folks to understand. All current third grade students are eligible to remain at their current attendance center. I would note there are two, two attendance centers that are impacted. Fred Assen Elementary and Valley Springs Elementary. Uh, critical to note that Fred Ass, Fred Assen Elementary is the attendance center that will see the largest impact in terms of number of students that are, um, moved from their attendance center into a new attendance center. Quite simply, that is based on the geographic location of our new elementary school, as well as the capacity at Fred Assen Elementary. The reason that we're building where we're building is because capacity at Fred Assen Elementary is filling up and we need to move students out of Fred Assen Elementary into the new elementary school. So that's important to note. It is relevant to note that those third graders are subject to our in-district open enrollment transportation policy and no transportation services are provided. That is, that is aligned to the transportation change that was made, um, a year or so ago in terms of in-district transportation of students, uh, being transported. All other current elementary students may submit an in-district open enrollment application for, uh, for their current attendance center. Uh, our open enrollment policy, uh, will be applied in terms of capacity. Uh, I would note that we will, we will do everything we can and strive in every way to accommodate those families, um, that have a third grade scoot, as well as younger siblings, and they all want to stay at their current attendance center. And we certainly will strive to accommodate those requests. In addition to that, we will currently strive to accommodate, um, families that choose to stay at their current attendance center if our capacity allows. So, um, we certainly want to, want to do that. We cannot guarantee it, but we'll certainly make every effort to, uh, to make that happen for the rest of our memory. Uh, would note, all of those other elementary students are also subject to the in-district open enrollment policy as well as classroom capacity. So when we work through our committee process, uh, when we, when we take a look at the recommended boundary lines and we take a look at those, it's important to note that we, we work to build consensus. Whether it was the two thousand eighteen Facility Review Committee, or it was the Boundary Line Committee, uh, we developed consensus, uh, consensus questions. So, uh, when we, when we got to the end of our collaborative process, our Boundary Line Committee was asked the following questions, and I would note all of the consensus, consensus questions were supported eleven to zero. Can we agree that the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed elementary boundary lines proactively manage student growth? Can we agree that the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed boundary lines align to future growth of the district? Can we agree that the strategy is established to navigate enrollments impacted by the boundary change work to minimize student impact? Can we agree that the proposed BD Vision twenty-fourty boundary lines develop a long-range boundary concept that will proactively manage student growth? And can we agree the BD Vision twenty-fourty boundary lines align to the future growth of the district? So all of those consensus questions were asked of the committee, and ultimately, all of those consensus questions were supported and agreed on eleven to zero. Uh, just a few other key items to note. Staffing process currently in progress. Uh, the building principal will be Mrs. Kanan Palmer. Uh, positions are posted internally. We're currently working through our internal transfer request process, anticipate that being done by January. Uh, educational offerings been asked a question. What is the, what does the programming look like there? I would tell you that we offer a strong viable curriculum. I point to our district reading, uh, protocol in terms of consistency across our district in terms of, uh, reading curriculum and instruction. And then ultimately, the offerings will be consistent at all of our elementary buildings, including our new elementary building. And then the third item that, uh, became, uh, very, very important after, um, having the opportunity to meet and chat with parents is concerns or questions about the Ignite programming before and after school, uh, childcare. I have confirmed with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, CEO, they intend to operate before and after school childcare programming at the new elementary school. And they appreciate the partnership that we have and the opportunity, uh, to work with us. So. That provides you an overview of the, um, process and, uh, ultimately a boundary line update. I will certainly have an additional boundary line update for you, uh, at our next meeting. And then again, like I said, uh, seek approval in November. Uh, with that, Madam Chair, I would certainly entertain any questions that you have.
Chair, can you clarify for me? So if I have a third grade child, they get to stay. Um, if I have a first grade child, they get to, if a third grader stays, they stay provided space, right?
Correct.
When the third grader finishes their fourth grade year, does the first grader get to stay, or do they then have to move on to their new building? Are they allowed to stay throughout there? That's the one thing I, I think I know the answer, but it likely doesn't people know.
Yes, the first grader would be allowed to stay. The one item that a family may want to give consideration to is that the kindergarten year that you're gonna have in three years may not get to, get to, get approved in terms of an open enrollment. And when I say that, because I have literally seen open enrollment requests for kindergartners for like the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year come across my desk. So, um, yes, your first grader could stay if they were approved, but as far as any younger child, it would be totally based on capacity.
Neither should be sometimes, there are children in the neighborhood that are not gonna be the children that you're gonna see at the school potentially, because maybe they don't have that option. Uh, so see below for recommended boundary line. I will see below.
Yeah, I just noticed that. Apparently, the, uh, PDF did not, uh, get added to that. I will certainly make that available at our
Thank you.
At our website. And we could certainly get that communication to you.
Or just, yeah, just in case somebody calls, I don't know exactly what to answer.
It was in the video as well, correct?
Yes, it's in the video. Yeah. So we can write this in the video. Yeah, awesome. Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Superintendent Arson. Uh, Mr. Schleckway, anything tonight?
Nothing.
Mr. Frackin?
Nothing tonight.
Anyone out there have anything tonight? I'll just do it that way. Is it easier that way? Okay, thank you. All right. No board policy. That takes us to our next item, general business. Brandon Valley School District Pandemic Response Plan, the Student Close Contact Protocol.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So just want to provide you, uh, this evening an opportunity to take a look at our student close contact protocol. Within, within this, uh, presentation, I do present three options. Uh, I would not, I would note that there, it is not, um, uh, conclusive of all of the potential options. So, um, I'm not saying that this is every option, or, uh, e- every option is exactly the way that every option could be, but it is to give you, or provide you with a starting point of, of what options you may want to consider. Um, so with, without further ado, uh, we can start with that. Before we get going, I want to just review the close contact definition so everyone understands, um, what the CDC and the South Dakota Department of Health are utilizing for close contact definition. Close contact definition is within sixteen, fifteen minutes or more of a confirmed positive COVID-nineteen case. Again, the CDC, South Dakota Department of Health, uh, they state that a mask and barrier do not impact an individual's identification as a close contact. I do want to note that the initial information that we had when developing our return to learn plan was that masks and barriers would impact an individual's identification as a close contact. So, initial information, again, was that close contact is a fourteen-day requirement. Uh, that information was shared by the Department of Health, uh, early in the school year. Excuse me. And it was later changed and we were informed that it is a South Dakota Department of Health, uh, recommendation. Uh, I would tell you that the, the South Dakota Department of Education has stated in a frequently asked questions document to schools, that school boards have the ability to define the conditions under which close contacts may resume school attendance. Uh, to this point, I would tell you that the Brandon Valley School District Pandemic Response Plan institutes public health official recommendations. And we, the Brandon Valley School District, have maintained the required close contact fourteen-day quarantine for individuals that are deemed to close contacts. Uh, also certainly relevant to note, as you guys are aware, we evaluated a high school, middle school schedule change to reduce close contacts while continuing to adhere to the guidelines and recommendations of the CDC and Department of Health. Obviously, there are pros and cons with, um, the alteration of that schedule, and we are at this moment in time, um, evaluating additional options, uh, as well as that type of schedule change. Very important to note, Brandon Valley School District Pandemic Response Plan, uh, really has two main strategies. Reduce the spread of the virus within school facilities and maintain educational functions in district operations. I would tell you that the close, close contact, uh, challenge that we face is quite a quandary because it does, it's basically both of those things. So when I say that, I mean, by having close contacts quarantined for fourteen days, no matter what, you are likely needing the strategy of reducing the spread of the virus within the schools. However, by having close contacts quarantined for fourteen days, no matter what, uh, you are struggling to maintain educational functions for those children that are kicked out for fourteen days in terms of their educational functions. So when I say it's a quandary, it, it is, uh, it is certainly just that. So, close contact protocol options. Again, this is not inclusive of every option that you have, rather just, um, a way to provide what I think are three viable options for the board to consider, um, as we, as we move forward. Again, you could add, um, something to, uh, the critical infrastructure model to make it, um, more enhanced or, uh, add another layer of protection. So again, I say that the close contact protocol options presented before you today, as they are, are not all inclusive of everything that, um, are, are your options. But, current strategy, required fourteen-day close contact quarantine. Uh, it adheres to the CDC guidelines and the South Dakota Department of Health recommendations. Option two, mask on mask eliminates close contact quarantine. I would tell you that other state departments of health, um, have, uh, adopted this model and communicated it to their various states. This would also be the model that the Sioux Falls Public School District utilizes. Uh, and then the critical infrastructure model is ultimately a model where close contacts continue to attend, but they are subject to required criteria. So I'm gonna give you those three options, uh, share some advantages and disadvantages at a very high level. Um, again, there are probably more advantages and more disadvantages that I don't list, but I just want to give you some of the high-level, uh, pros and cons. So option one, certainly the first advantage is that it adheres to CDC guidelines and South Dakota Department of Health recommendations. Another advantage is that it reduces the likelihood of the spread of disease. I would tell you that, uh, up to this point in time, uh, within the Brandon Valley School District, we are not seeing the spread of COVID, um, within our facilities. What we are doing is working in terms of, of COVID-nineteen, with mitigation strategies and, uh, the close contact quarantine strategy. Disadvantages, it adversely impacts the close contacts educational process and multiple quarantines are possible. Option two, mask on mask eliminates close contact quarantine. Close contacts may remain in school if all involved in the situation were wearing a mask. With that, close contacts, when they return to school or stay in school, they are required to remain asymptomatic, wear masks, screen daily and monitor for symptoms. The advantage is we reduce the number of close contact quarantines. It creates an incentive to utilize face coverage. And it is utilized by some state departments of health. and it is utilized by some state departments of health. Not the South Dakota Department of Health, note, but some state departments of health. With that, I would add the caveat that it would also draw upon a level of scientific research, as other departments of health are drawing upon that when they make their recommendations. I don't have specific insights into that, as our department of health has not provided me that research, but I'm going to make the assumption that it does draw upon a body of research associated with mask on mask. Disadvantages, individual is still required to quarantine if the close contact quarantine, if the other individual is not masked. I believe that that is a distinct disadvantage in this situation, if you have a child that is doing all the right things for all the right reasons, however, for whatever, for whatever, whatever reason, an individual within the circumstance is not masked, they are still required to quarantine. It requires monitoring and documentation of individualized masking practices. It places an administrative burden on our administration as well as our teaching staff in terms of documenting who is or isn't wearing a mask. That's an item that certainly is a disadvantage, as we manage those items on a daily basis. Individuals may, I'm going to use the term dispute the fact that they were or were not wearing a mask in a passionate way, which may provide us with some challenges. And then the potential to increase the spread of disease. Having close contacts in our facilities in any way potentially increases the risk of spread of disease.
Can I ask, Jared, with that, I'm sorry, my concern is, what's the correct way to wear a mask? Obviously, we've all seen kids wishing people out, you know, full cover or below the nose or below the chin while I'm still wearing a mask. You know, so that's the problem as well, correct?
Absolutely, so, as presented in our Return to Learn Plan regarding our strongly recommended masking strategy, the appropriate way to wear a mask is over the bridge of your nose and extending to your chin. That would be the appropriate way to wear a mask, and I would direct our administration when evaluating whether or not we are talking about mask on mask, that appropriate mask wearing, meaning over the bridge of the nose extending to the chin, would be the definition that we would want to utilize. Is that going to present challenges? It sure is.
You're wearing a mask right now?
I, I understand. So, that's the mask on mask in terms of the elimination of close contact quarantine. Option three, critical infrastructure model. I would note that later in our agenda, when we get to personnel, we will be, we are looking forward to a recommendation to approve a resolution declaring all Brandon Valley staff members as critical infrastructure workers. Ultimately, what that says is that close contacts may remain in school regardless of the masking situation, but the close contact is required to remain asymptomatic, wear a mask, screen daily, and monitor for symptoms. So, that's why I draw upon the critical infrastructure model. Advantages, allows close contacts to remain in their educational setting. An advantage would be is that it aligns to the recommended approach we are utilizing with staff. And we got approval of that resolution, of course. And then the disadvantage, again, potential to increase the spread of disease. Anytime you bring in close contacts, you have the potential to increase the spread of disease. I would tell you that bringing in close contacts that were not masked within a situation, I have no data or research to tell you this, but I believe you would probably have a greater risk for the spread of disease with no masks being involved in a situation versus a mask being involved in a situation, so.
Jared, do we have any, are there any state departments of health that recommend this option?
Not that I know of. I would note that the CDC recommends this option for employers to conduct with employees in the event that it's important for them to be there for you to continue your operation. So, it is a CDC recommendation to employers, as I understand it. I have not seen it from Department of Health to schools specifically.
That's not a CDC recommendation to schools, for students?
No, not that I'm aware of. So, then the third page or the third items located within this would just be simply, sorry, would be the specific option and the verbiage included within the close contact protocol that I would draw your attention to. So, for example, our current strategy, the use of cloth face covering or mask is strongly recommended on Brandon Valley School District facilities and grounds or on district provided transportation. And then I would draw you down to this statement, where it says, "Close contacts are required to quarantine for fourteen days from the date of last exposure." So, that's option one, that's what we're currently doing. Option two, which is the other state Department of Health's model or the Sioux Falls Public School District model, the use of cloth face covering or mask is expected while in Brandon Valley School District facilities and grounds or for our transportation. And then the item I would draw your attention to is, "When mask on mask, a close contact may continue to attend school and related activities with all the following criteria. Again, remaining asymptomatic, screen for symptoms, required to wear a mask. When either individual is not wearing a mask, a close contact is required to quarantine for fourteen days." That's just an infographic, and then option three is the critical infrastructure designation model. The use of cloth face covering or mask is strongly recommended, and then ultimately, close contacts are required to quarantine for fourteen days from the last exposure, or the student may continue to attend school and related activities with the following criteria. I think it's important to note that close contacts will have to agree to wearing a mask, well, at school and school functions, if they are deemed a close contact. It's not that they, it's not that they can just stay, it's that they can only stay if they agree to do those three things. So, with that, Madam Chair, certainly, if you have any questions that you have, and or discussion that needs to occur?
Thank you for the options, and as you said, I think there's ways that we can amend all of them. Option number three, I think is probably more similar to how Hairsburg started. I know that they've started to amend some of what they've been doing. Just curious, because we started the school year off that masks matter, barriers matter. I think that's why, you know, anyone chooses to wear one out in public, we go grocery shop, whatever, we, eventually they matter. We can't control everybody else around us. For number three, knowing that we want to increase mask wearing, we want to make sure we don't increase spread, but we also want to figure out how to not have some students out and missing face-to-face instruction. Would it be beneficial to amend, say, for those wearing a mask, they would not be deemed for close quarantine? So, it's rather the same regard as the masking, because I don't think that increases the mask wearing. I don't think anyone's going to wear a mask, and so it's like, oh, I was caught, now what on? If we had the increase in wearing masking, mask upfront, but then it doesn't on the other side, these are penalized, because quarantine isn't penalizing anybody, but, because if we do the mask on mask, number two, again, like you stated, you know, we're still, even if we have it required, we're still going to have a population of students who get waivers, who have, this is where they're not going to wear it. And for the student that does wear it every day, all day, and they get sat next to or passed by the individual that does not wear one, they now have to quarantine when they choose to do all the right things. And if we're saying that masks matter, and if that's the reason we wear them at all, then wouldn't it matter for the person wearing it? Yes, mask on mask, great, ideal, but it's just not going to happen. We have situations where there's been limited number of adults told to please mask in certain situations of social distance, and those other adults don't do it. So, I don't foresee that we're going to get the entire student body to mask. Therefore, we're going to still have this situation go on. So, I guess be in favor or, however, we get to a motion for amending option three to say, you know, masks matter. So, for those that are deemed close contact but wearing a mask, may return to school. Still, they're asymptomatic, they still need to be wearing their masks for the next fourteen days, and still need to be monitoring for symptoms. That would be my amended statement. Obviously, those that are the case, they're still out, if they do experience symptoms, they need to head out. I know that it's in single digits that what is out there for data, it's very limited, but that's data out there that those that are close contacts, it's like less than five percent actually show symptoms. Not saying that we don't want to have that increase, but I think at least one party wearing a mask should be able to stay in school on activities unless it matters.
So, remember, just so I understand what you're saying, if you were to look at option three, the use of cloth face covering or mask is strongly recommended while in Brandon Valley School District facilities and grounds or on district provided transportation, and then skip down to the close contact verbiage, close contacts are required to quarantine for fourteen days from the last exposure, period. In the event the student was protected by mask slash barrier, the student may continue to attend school and related activities with the following criteria. That would be what you would, would you would ask your respective members to consider?
Yes, when you're saying the close contact, the person being the close contact was the one wearing the mask?
Yeah. Correct.
I don't know, okay. I mean, ideally, yes, and hopefully, but I, one of my situations is just not going to happen, no matter how we try. I think the idea that we require, what do we do if someone does it? We still don't have any disciplinary action that says, what do we do with these fourteen, twenty, whatever kids that don't? They administer a burden of, "What did you mask on? What did you mask on? Why are you wearing a mask?" And we have all that, we have school districts in the state that mandate requiring masking, and now we have to close their doors because they have the spread of COVID. So, I don't know that requiring or mandated masking is the magic key or the answer. We started off with a really good plan, we all headed back to school. Students were enrolled, and they participated in discussion on what they were headed into, teachers' plan, or what they headed into with that masks and barriers matter. The only thing that changed was CDC and DOH a couple days prior. So, that's, I guess, just let's go back to mask matter.
A couple things concern me at this point. One, we're in a significant uptick in time in South Dakota, and we're discussing relaxing our rules. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but it just, there's a certain part of me that says, you question the timing when, you know, we have most desks, we have, day by day averages are higher than the then. It just, all of those kinds of things make me concerned. And then the additional piece, that we're in a situation where we're considering, I don't know what the right phrase is, but we're mandating that our staff come to school, you know, making them critical workers. And from everything that has been shared with this board, and I think things that you agree, we find that mask on mask has significantly greater chances of reducing spread if both people are wearing a mask. So, the second piece of this is that we're going to require our staff members to come to work. Again, two constituencies, I've said this from the start, our students and their families, but we're an employer with staff members. We need to make sure that we keep them safe. So, we're going to allow them to be in a room where right now about ten percent, maybe fifty percent of the kids are wearing a mask. That's all, in this particular district, that's about all we're seeing. Again, I've been in Sioux Falls High Schools and Middle Schools, and masking is about ninety-five percent. So, is it possible to get kids to wear masks? It is. Might we have kids that was wearing masks, whatever? You're always going to have people who are going to take things to the margin. If we believe that the absolute best way to reduce transmission, aside from quarantining kids, the highest percentage likely of not having it transmitted is to go mask on mask. To me, that makes sense. I can support, number one, staying the way that we are, dealing with, it's so unfortunate for those kids that are at home. It's so difficult for them, not just academically, but emotionally. I think it's very difficult for them to be home. So, and they could have it multiple times, and could have done nothing wrong, and others did it in the wrong way. So, but it obviously does do some prevention of those things. So, I can support number one, even though I know what it will do to that small percentage, which is about four to five percent of the kids at the high school on a given day. Or I could support, easily I can support number two, because the mask on mask, especially in this time of growth of increased spread and those kinds of things. And I think that I would be surprised if there weren't enough room in classrooms for a student or two who has a documented reason not to wear a mask. A place for them to be able to be. And I think kids, and I've been around kids, and worked with high school kids for a long time, they are going to respect other health issues for other kids. They're really good about that. I think we can say that, you know, based on how your student council responded to the potential of an AD plan, because they wanted to take care of each other and make sure everybody was having the best possible experience. Number three is not supported that we know of by the CDC. It is not supported by any South Dakota or any Department of Health that we know of. We are going out on our own, maybe not totally on our own, but without any kind of a backup by an organization like that. At least the other two plans, we have a backup. Our liability is much greater, option three, than it is with the other options in mind here.
I don't want to come across that we don't care what they're, I don't care what the staff, I absolutely do. I want, you know, they're on top of mind for safety. When we started the year, that we strongly recommend masks and that they would be considered. I think there were staff on both sides of that, but there are staff that choose not to wear masks as well or wear them at times. So, we have to think about all the staff. As much as we think students would consider other students who can't or won't wear masks, because trust me, there'll be waivers, they want to do medical, it'll be waivers because they don't want to. I think there are students that would respect teachers that, hey, in this classroom, I need you to wear them, or I need you to restrict my barriers, I think that's definitely something our Brandon Valley community definitely would do. Number three, plus, as I'm going to call it, is supported by the CDC for many of our essential workers as employees. Number two is not supported by our Department of Health in South Dakota, because in South Dakota, we've been going on masks are optional. So, it's not a CDC, it's an other Department of Health, I think it's North Dakota Nebraska. Sioux Falls School District did number two, Hairsburg did number three. We're just trying to figure out what is best for Brandon Valley. Parents, students, and staff got on board with masks matter at the beginning of the year. I just think it's something that we need to really ponder a little bit more. Cases have did rise, they're actually down the last two weeks, but I don't know if that's impacting our students. I haven't seen that be a headline yet, that I don't think that they can carry elsewhere, but I do believe we go with option three plus mask wearing will go up tremendously, and that's really what we're hoping for.
But the CDC does not recommend option three for students?
It does. They also, they also don't recommend option two, that was not.
I agree, that's why I said I can, I can support number one. I could, I can, you know, we did, we have. I'm just saying, if we want to go off of number one, we need to protect the school district, we need to protect our employees, we need to do everything to reduce the spread, if we're going to walk away from the thing that we know or we believe has had the greatest likelihood, and we want to try and create an opportunity for more kids maybe to participate in activities that are getting shut off by those things. and we wanna try and create an opportunity for more kids, maybe to participate in activities that are getting shut off by those things, and they need the emotional interaction of those things. Um, I believe in kids, um, I believe they would wear the mask, we'll have some, sure, we'll always have some that will push it on a little. But it seems to me to be quite a leap from one to three, even three plus. And this is just, I mean, this is a great example of, we don't know. You know, we're, we're in the middle of this thing and we're doing the best we can with the information that we have.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you're right. We don't know. The thing is, the healthcare providers, if you look at all the cases of us that had it, how many of us caught it at our work? Well, I caught it at work, but I'm a Smithfield number. So it was really community spread at work. And so if we're thinking of this, this is, a lot of this is community spread. Why? I'm just gonna put it out there, you guys, 'cause you know how I am. People are tired. We're tired of living in our homes, we're tired of not being able to go for groceries, we're tired of not being around each other. I'm tired of my employers saying, "Be careful at Thanksgiving and Christmas. Now you're interrupting my holidays." I'm, I understand, I understand the frustration, I understand the passion on all the sides, I get it. But if you look at the statistics with kids, they don't get it, and if they do, they don't know they have it. And then unfortunately, there's a lot of us that don't know we have it, so we could be walking around with it, hither and yon wherever, wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, have it, not even know it, until we go get our blood drawn and realize, well, when did I have it? I had a coworker who came up to me the other day, "I have antibodies. I don't understand where I got them from." "Well, I know where you got them from. When did you have it?" She says, "I have no clue." So that, we are dealing with the disease that unfortunately has become, and I'm gonna just say it, politicized in the fact that some people believe in face coverings and some people don't. And it, and it is what it is, we just have to do the best we can. And we have to understand that at some point, I'm not gonna live my life in fear personally. And I work in the healthcare arena. I put my PPE on, I do my best, I do what I'm supposed to do. I was in Sunshine the other day, normally I don't wear a mask, but I did because like Boris would say, I had a cough, dude cold. So I didn't want anybody thinking, oh, there she is hacking down aisle number thirteen in the cat food, looking for something, and I'm gonna get COVID. And the other thing is, sometimes I feel as a healthcare provider that common sense has gone out the window. We have allergies, people are harvesting, I smell the dust, I cough, I hack, I wheeze, I, my eyes water. There's still mono, there's still strep, there's still ear infections, there's still sinus infections, there's still... I know I'm probably not making any sense now, but I'm just, COVID is COVID, and it's here to stay. So we just need to figure out how we're gonna go from here on out. I have no problem with number three, the way it stands, actually, and I have no problem with number three plus. Um, I am kinda, I'm in agreement with Ms. Sacks, or I think if we tell, if we say, if we do the three plus model and say, okay, if you're deemed a close contact, if Mr. Odie and Renee Olem are in a classroom together, and Mrs. Olem gets it, and Mr. Odie's my close contact, but he's wearing his mask, then he can come to school as long as he's passing the criteria. If he's not wearing his mask, well, then he stays home. And once again, when we had our patrons fill out the survey, seventy-five percent or close to that said they did not want a mask mandate, they wanted it optional. This, if we do this, this really does put the burden on the parents and the students. And I hate to do that, but at the same time, I'm not sure that that's not a good thing. It's a discussion to be had, and it's the same, you know, teachers and staff, I understand that there are those who have health issues. And I think it's, it has to be okay for them to say, "You need to stay there." Or you, if you want to sit in front of my barrier, you can, but bring a chair, don't breathe down on me. I, it's okay to be assertive and say, "I am trying to protect myself. Please keep your distance." I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Um, and that's.
And we, and I think we know about three plus.
Let's catch on.
The thing, the thing that we need all to remember too is, this is the plan. And if we pivot to three plus, we might pivot a different direction two months from now based on new information, new numbers, new recommendations, whatever, um, it might be. There is, you know, when we talk about it's the burden's on the kid, the burden's on the family. Even in, in three, the burden still is on the teacher too, because the teacher's gonna be able, have to be able to say, yes, in that class, that student had a mask on, wore it correctly, right? And I, and that might be as simple as, here's their CD chart, and they axing a kid who isn't wearing a mask that day, or at any point during that class doesn't have the mask on correctly. They just have to ax that kid, and I just keep that date and the three reminder, and if they come to me, and there it is, well, these are the kids who didn't have it on that day, or whatever. I don't, I don't know what their process would be tracking that, what happened, right?
I think that, and that's, you know, there's that academic, or excuse me, administrative burden, but I would hope that that would help them feel somewhat
Oh, absolutely.
of their health or their, their environment. I mean, I know that that's one thing I hate to add, we also hate to add more students out, 'cause I know that's been administrative burden, that's not been fun. On the other side, we gotta call every parent for the kid that's not wearing a mask, if no, they're not wearing a mask, okay, but they're not wearing a mask, and there's some moms are not wearing a mask, you know, waiver for them not to wear a mask. I mean, there's those cases too. So no matter what we do, there's gonna be administrative burden, it's just, I think in three plus, or whatever you wanna call it.
I'm with three plus.
Thank you. Teachers and staff get control of their environment in a way, so that, you know what, now I know who it is. It's not so much a secret, I know who's kinda on board here, who isn't, a little bit more on us.
And then I think, you know, a part of this is that it is, you know, it's, it's on that student. Um, if you have to get quarantined for fourteen days, that's kind of on you, because you chose not to wear a mask at whatever point it would be.
Chose not to wear it appropriately.
Good, or chose not to wear appropriately, whichever, um, you know, I think. And the other thing that I think it does that we haven't talked about, is I think it takes a little pressure off of the kid who hasn't, or who needs, or who should be getting tested to see if they do have it, but are really afraid of putting friends or people around them into a quarantine situation. And we don't want anybody hiding the potential fact that they have something, because that is very groundless and destructive. Um, I guess I would say that I could, I could support a three plus. I think we need to monitor and follow, I think we need to revisit it, yeah, maybe it's six weeks, two months.
That would be perfect timing.
You know, with the Christmas.
Everything I've heard from, confirmations, weddings, these get togethers that people are trying to do their normal things again or get back to normal, that's where they're catching some of this stuff, is more the bigger group things again. So Christmas, Thanksgiving and Christmas might give us a run for our money, but at least then we'll know where we're headed. That's just my thought.
We can find it against other districts and what they've chosen to do as well. I think it's a fair assessment. I mean, quite honestly, option one, it was a little bit of a pivot for us as well. We went away from mask matter to now they don't matter. So, you know, we always follow the CDC and DOH. It's just, it was a pivot from what we thought and how we enrolled students and put our teacher plans together.
So Jared, I'm gonna ask you a question. Is this option three, three plus, it's a doable thing from a classroom administrative teacher, are we putting, are we giving them something that they can? You know what I mean? And that's realistic.
Sure.
So I would mandate the right members, do you know what I'm saying?
I, I would comment on a couple of things. So first and foremost, anything other than number one, district norms, CDC guidelines, and the South Dakota Department of Health recommendations.
All right.
So I said that, I'm on record having said that. Three plus provides balance, is the word I remember when I sat and listened to, sat, listened to the conversation, balance. Health, education, the mental health of kids, three plus equals balance. I would tell you that I believe the juice is worth the squeeze for our staff and our administration in terms of management and or um, daily managerial responsibilities with documenting masks versus not wearing masks. Because if it increases the number of students that are wearing, wearing masks in our schools, up to seventy, eighty percent, because kids don't wanna be close contact quarantined, then we'll have smaller number of kids that are kicked out, et cetera. So ultimately, I would say balance. Three, when I hear three plus conversation around three plus, it sounds like a good balance. Although it doesn't adhere to the CDC guidelines or South Dakota Department of Health recommendations, it strikes balance.
So I think we need to, most teachers have to take time to argue whose absence, since we had a lot of those, and assess, you know, packets to send out. Maybe now we just take that time to assess, mask out, mask in, protect it. I mean, hopefully that's a good swap out of time. I don't know, I'm not in the classroom, but again, it's a little bit more controlled there, but.
And I can back what Nick said earlier, you know, are we gonna have some kids who are gonna say, "Yeah, I had my mask," you know, are we gonna get into some of that? Probably. You have parents that do it in Sunshine. Yeah. But I mean, are we gonna potentially have completely come to say, well, no, you know, teachers are smart, no idea, and are we gonna?
Yeah.
We probably are, but it still is going to reduce significantly. Um, and so again, is that, is that the reward worth the burden, so to speak? And, uh, again, we're, we're six, eight weeks, and we look at it again, kinda like we're about eight weeks in and, and we've looked and we've moved, and maybe we, maybe we move back, all the way back to, because this isn't working, or maybe, you know, I, I don't know where we're at. Um, but in, um...
Because the administrative burden, if you were to be in mask on mask, you know, but they would still have to keep track
Absolutely.
of the entire classroom.
Absolutely.
So I mean, hopefully we're reducing a little bit.
Well, it's on the kid, and, um, you know, and if teachers will be a burden that process, but certainly it's on the kid. And if I come back, again, the other key thing that people need to understand about option three is that student has to, every day, the one that was exposed has to wear a mask, has to be, if they're over temp or whatever the other kinds of things. So there are protocols, uh, some protocols in place, uh, to help with that and so forth. And like, certain sightings, I think we have very, very, very few kids in total, you know, in our, no, it's very few. Um, and, you know, most ones who aren't as close, because they've had a close contact, and someone has a close contact with a parent or whatever. Um, it's not gonna reduce the close contact situation for a kid who gets at a family wedding, who's exposed to a family wedding.
I, I actually need a comment on that?
Yeah, please, help me understand that.
I think that household close contacts are going to be permitted to continue to come to school um, in the event that they tell us in good faith that they have been socially distanced and are not close contacts. This is an extremely difficult and sticky component of this entire situation, and I will explain why. Um, we've had families that have reached out and said, um, "My, my husband has COVID, my son is a sophomore. Please know that my son will continue to come to school because he is not a close contact. He is isolating in the basement, we need supper in the basement, we are not close contacts with him." The Department of Health has indicated that, um, in a household, you could, you do have, you could have the ability to not be close contacts based on certain circumstances. And that becomes very, very challenging to navigate in terms of students and staff. Later, when we get to the staff resolution, um, there is a line item there that basically states that in the event that a staff is a household close contact, uh, the superintendent may exclude them from work, so I have to have a conversation and investigate the situation. Is it a household close contact that occurs from, uh, an adult child that they very rarely see and was at home for one day, uh, from, from college, and they, they didn't read the definition, or et cetera? So the household close contact item is very challenging. I would tell you that schools that have previously not allowed household close contacts to come to school are now giving consideration to allowing household close contacts to come to school. That's like conversations that are occurring in the districts across the, across the state because of the challenges associated with household close contacts. It's also important to note that we as a school district do not know about a household close contact unless the parent or guardian informs us of that close contact. The Department of Health does not notify us that Kroy Larson, whose mom tested positive, is a close contact. So we definitely don't unless the parents tell us. So then you get yourself in a situation where ultimately you're punishing the people who are being honest and sharing with you in comparison to those that are heightened, if you like, with that phrase. So the close con, household close contact component, very challenging. Option three would not exclude a household close contact to continue to attend.
So that, that, you know, as Dean said, we're coming forward to say we have a household close contact because I don't wanna be out for two weeks, which is why they're not either getting tested like you said earlier, or I don't wanna tell you. So if we go with something three, it would be, um, whether it's at home or at school, you're a close contact, you're no symptoms, you can return. But you, as a state here, you must wear a mask for fourteen days, hopefully longer. Um, we're gonna daily screen for symptoms. So we, we don't really need to, that get that sticky one of, was it at home? Who was, I mean, I don't, we don't wanna get into all that. We're just gonna say, close contact regardless of where, this is what's gonna be the bottom.
So onsite, a mask or barrier, offsite, we can't control that. Um, we would allow them to continue to come, but they have to remain asymptomatic, screen daily for symptoms, including pre-screening before and monitoring throughout when they're required to wear a mask. I, I, I said this before and I'll say it again, I believe in the Brandon Valley School District families. And I believe that if a parent contacts us and says, "Hey, my wife tested positive, we have a junior at the high school." Our administrative, we would have the conversation with them, "How do you feel about the contact that your junior has had with, with, um, with your, with your spouse, with your, whatever it is? Do you feel as though you were within six feet for fifteen minutes or longer and you weren't wearing a mask? Did you ride in a car for five hours out of traffic and send your shit in Subway sandwich?" You know, I mean, we have that conversation, and if it comes back, they, they have substantial contact. I think we, we could have that conversation with our families, and our families would make the right choice for the best interest of all.
So will you restate, uh, three plus, please?
Yes, please.
Please do.
Mr. Odie, did you have something? How are we gonna monitor this? Who's gonna do the monitoring? Is it the faculty or the classroom teacher, or are the kids gonna be walking into the office, say, "Tell me, I'm, you know, I've been exposed." Who is gonna do, as, as far as, um, administrators, do you have, do we have enough help to do this type of screening and bookwork? Because this is gonna take some time to do it.
So I'll come back to that a little bit. Uh, in terms of monitoring, we already monitor our close contacts. Meaning if you're identified as a close contact, uh, your individual information goes into, um, our monitoring spreadsheet. So we know who our close contacts are. In terms of the mask monitoring, administratively, our, our, um, building level administration would have to inform their respective teachers that these individuals are on close contact protocol and they're on the must-wear-a-mask list. In terms of prior to school screening, we already ask all of our families to conduct the daily screening process, um, prior to coming on site. Um, when we have that conversation with our close contacts, we will also ask them to temp check their, their child before sending them to school. And then in terms of daily monitoring throughout the day, uh, we'll have to evaluate our ability to temp check them onsite, and it will depend on the timing of the day, et cetera. Some of those specific protocols, um, will be developed once we, if we pivot into this type of action. I don't like to define it specifically, because, um, depending on the number of close contacts you have, I don't wanna say we're gonna temp check twice a day at eight thirty AM, because we very likely don't have the capacity to temp check all of our close contacts twice a day at eight thirty AM and one thirty PM. So we need to have a little bit of flexibility administratively to manage that process and protocol. But we will certainly continue to screen daily for symptoms, and then also monitor throughout the day, and we'll develop that protocol.
And just, you know, just FYI, we, when I show up at work, I temp check myself, put a sticker on my badge with the date. If I start feeling crappy during the day, I, it's my responsibility to go temp check, and either to call employee health to leave or whatever it takes. Or, you know, we're only required, just as healthcare providers, just so you understand, it's one, one time a day, it's in the morning right away. And then if we start feeling ill, of course, the whole mantra has been since the beginning of time, if you're sick, stay home.
I've been listening, and I've listened to Greg, because Greg always said, you know, I've been listening and I've listened to Greg. Greg always said, you know, kids, well, this is a week or two ago, Greg said, I know high school kids, they aren't going to wear them. And yes or no, who knows? But I think if we go to option three, and in order to get the kids more into a routine, back to the normalcy, you might see these masks become more common and without really putting a mandate on them, where the mask population might grow and we, it might be the benefit for us.
So I would again ask, what is the biggest difference between three and three plus?
So, so three stands regardless of the mask. So irregardless, if I'm a close contact, if I wasn't wearing a mask, I can still come back to school as long as I wear a mask, probably. Three B states.
Three plus.
Yeah, three, sorry. Three plus, three plus states that I can come back to school if I was wearing a mask when I became a close contact. So, so masks and barriers count when we trace. So when we go back and trace to say who was a close contact or not, we go back to saying, oh, good, you were wearing a mask, you're receiving a barrier, maybe both. So although you're a close contact, we feel in good judgment, good nature, whatever, that you could come back to school because you were protecting yourself. Student B, you were a close contact, you were not wearing a mask and or now you had a barrier. I'm sorry, that's way too wide open. You need to quarantine. And, 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 sorry, the positive case, you had no mask.
So if I wasn't wearing a mask and I'm a close contact, I can still come back to school only if I'm wearing a mask?
No, no, you cannot. So three B, if you don't wear a mask and you're a close contact, you're out. The only, you can't say, hey, I'm not going to wear a mask until I get caught and then like, but I'll wear my forward. Because at that point, let's say that you actually did get closed. All you're doing is bringing it back into school or whenever you choose to take it down past it in the hallway or eating lunch.
Whether they're wearing a mask or not.
Right. So the only way you get yourself, like get out of jail free card or get out of quarantine is if you're wearing the mask before being a close contact.
Madam Chair, the language presented in three plus would be as follows. Close contacts are required to quarantine for fourteen days with the last exposure, period. In the event that close contact was protected by mask slash barrier, the student may continue to attend school and have related activities with all the following criteria, which are what we talked about previously.
So Jared, you know what I'm saying, are we, the way that you stated that, does the barrier take away the need for a mask?
It may. And I say barrier because you might have a child who's asthmatic and chooses to wear a face shield. Well, face shield isn't a mask.
Well, I get that. I'm talking about like a plastic.
Yeah, the plexiglass would matter. In this, in this verbiage, the plexiglass would also have a level of importance. Yes.
And really in that case, probably for the protection of the teachers, they're the ones that have plastic barriers, right?
Elementary. Elementary notes.
Oh, I think that's, that's supposed to be entirely a disaster.
This helps the elementary.
I would give you on solving our problem.
So do you have any other table or be a plastic?
Yeah.
Yep.
Really like the barrier thing for those that are, for instance, asthmatic and those kinds of circumstances. I'm not as keen on the barrier for other circumstances simply because we'll have a barrier here and I'm sitting here and next to here, the barrier's here, the barrier ends here. And we sit back, you know, like we do and there's a barrier in it. A barrier in here.
The barrier is going to have more of a positive impact on your elementary and intermediate age school children that the masking has been, I don't know if difficult is the right phrase, but the masking has been very limited. So right now, for example, in your fourth grade classroom, child is at a desk barrier and has COVID positive, you'd have the ability to have those children continue to attend, whether or not they were required to ask. If their plexiglass barriers were on their desk, they could still have the ability to attend, which all those management or Saxo's initial comment about, quite frankly, three pluses, what we started the year believing was what is going to be the rules, the regulations sent for by the health officials.
In our, although all of our cases have been low across the district, they're even lower if it exists in our elementary buildings. And I think nationally, the younger the ages get, even less the cases and the impact. So whether we want to vote everyone wears a mask or barrier, I think is somewhat negligible in the case that our barriers have maybe been a reason things have worked. I don't, I can't imagine trying to get every student to wear a mask at those young ages. Some just, it's anxiety, some is understanding. But the other side is if we had a close contact quarantine, twenty, twenty-five students, if we're not going to regard barriers, those are aged kids that now parent or somebody has to be home with them. So that's a whole other.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to get a clarification because I hadn't put that into my brain until you did the slash thing and I know, okay, this is another recent puzzle. But yeah, it does take us back to kind of where we were initially talked about. Again, for, again, my experience is high school related, but I would say that, again, high school kids, middle school kids, you're really guaranteeing yourself that you will not get a quarantine if you have a mask on, right? Other, because there might be classes, yeah, that don't have plastic or you're in a situation, you're in the shop, you're in the grocery store, maybe there isn't the plastic per se, but as long as you got your mask on, you guarantee yourself, you know, as long as you remain asymptomatic almost like, you guarantee yourself. And so if you're not wearing a mask, it's you that are putting you at risk and you're not putting somebody else at risk of them getting some, getting the fourteenth case, which I think is really unfortunate. I could vote for three plus and just say, let's see, see what, see what it looks like in eight weeks or six weeks.
Is it here?
I, no, because I don't know what the wording is. I'm just telling you, somebody proposed it, that'd be correct.
I, I think the, the idea that CDC and state regulation following their recommendations or protocol, yes, is great, but if we look back, how many times have we changed? This will be the first, right? How many times from day one has the CDC changed? So I mean, just because they might not agree with this plan three, give it a day, give it a week, they might come out and say it. I, I think the biggest thing is as a board, as a community, as a staff, we're flexible, balanced. You know, we've came and we've talked, we're, we're continuing to learn. We're all trying to learn there again, how to wear a mask. But I think as long as we're open, as long as we stay open to say, hey, it's been six weeks, it's been, you know, three months, we're doing pretty good. And I think Brandon is doing a great job. Do I want to follow suit with Sioux Falls or Hartsburg or Pierre or Watertown? No, I want to do what's best for us. You know, we're not New York, we're here in Brandon. We have a great community. There again, if we decide to go with one of the three options, absolutely, it might be Thanksgiving, we come back and we say, you know what? The numbers are spiking. You know, you had said that the state is, is increasing, the numbers have increased. I guess my question would be, has the school district increased? You know, and maybe they have, you know, maybe the close contacts have increased, but I think last two weeks ago, we had pretty much decided that we're, we're doing pretty well. I mean, for those kids that are out. So again, I mean, congratulations to us, but as long as we're open to coming back and saying, oh my gosh, when we decided we need to go back, you know, we're open to that. But for right now, I'm all right with three or three plus.
Well, I just, I think before I make motion, just want to thank like all the staff, the teachers, administrators. They have given so much every day during this crazy time. So I don't want anyone to feel overlooked around her, as well as the parents and students the same. I mean, I think everybody has worked through this scenario with such community and spirit and pride that we do with the links awake. I know that sometimes people kind of arise, but I mean, it's true. I think we've really seen that with love and respect and just pushing forward to be active and engaged in this whole process. So thank you for the grace that you've given all of us, even the heated discussions that we've had out in the community, I think are necessary so we can get to what works best for most, hopefully. So I guess with that, I make the official motion to approve option three or B.
Three plus.
Three plus. For our pandemic response plan. Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Telcon.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. We are now the homeowners of three plus. It's a new app you can get under time.
I would note, Madam Chair, that the individuals that are currently in close contact quarantine will be notified tomorrow of the change. Those individuals will be informed that they may return, but they are required to wear a mask, remain asymptomatic, required to wear a mask, monitored daily and pre-screen prior to coming to school. So those individuals will be contacted.
So those ones that are out of quarantine, if they were wearing a mask at the time that they, that they would be allowed to come back? If they were not wearing a mask, how are we going to know that was?
We're going to learn together.
Okay. The other thing I think we all basically need to.
The good news is our close contact quarantine right now is kicked down.
Yeah, so it's not that.
So it's not too many.
Um, the other thing I think we need to make sure we continue to tell people is if decisions that we're making cause parents to rethink the decision that they made prior to the school year because the rules have changed potentially. I mean, I'm not just saying this, but if, you know, as things come, they should be visiting with administration if they say, you know what, we, we would like to now no longer be at home or we would now like to go to home because we're not coming, whatever might be. I mean, we've kind of, if we change the rules, although this kind of seems to me like we're going back to where we were or whatever. But I'm just saying, anytime that we change the rules, when people made a decision based on a certain set of rules, just know that you can talk to the, to the administration, talk to superintendent and see if, if that necessitates a change.
We're going to do everything we can not to change the rules very often because if people live in and out of one thing or another.
I totally, I totally agree with that. But what we do, we need to be aware that people made decisions based on one set and we need to be fair to them and we will be so.
Yeah, anything along the same with the standard administration, you know, as things can or change, if there's something that they feel uneasy about or feel, you know, necessity for, to talk to the bill administration and those get followed up to all of us. So we definitely want to make sure they feel that.
Yeah, because so often there are just unintended consequences, right? So we.
Twenty twenty, yeah, I forget. Is it almost over? All right. Number two is under consent. I would, I'm trying to think. Entertain a motion to approve number two under the consent approval general business as presented, please.
So.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to personnel. Item number one, recommendation to approve the resolution declaring all Brandon Valley staff members as critical infrastructure workers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As previously discussed, I think we brought this forward in August as an item that you would likely be acting on, but we wanted to wait until it was absolutely necessary. We would tell you that we were at the point now where we need to authorize the designation of all Brandon Valley School District staff as critical infrastructure workers. Again, this clearly outlines what close contacts are and that a, an individual that is deemed a close contact is, can be directed to continue to attend work. They have to adhere to the following items, pre-screen, regular monitoring, wear a mask, social distancing where, where is possible. So that is item to note. Would note one phrase in there that exists is in the event that staff members a household close contact, superintendent excludes the employee from work. That's basically providing us the authority to investigate the situation enough to make an informed decision whether or not we should allow that person back. I've been conversating with some of my colleagues across the state that have already designated individuals as critical infrastructure workers. You know, they'll use seventy-two hours, sometimes they'll use five days, sometimes. They'll, they'll ultimately base some of that on the type of exposure from the household contact and make informed decisions. Certainly recommend approval of that so we can continue to staff our schools and other areas.
Any questions, concerns, comments on that one? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, recommendation to approve resolution declaring all Brandon Valley staff members as critical infrastructure workers.
So.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Consent items two through seven, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Number eight, information only. There are some building permit applications for you to look at if you so choose. Under our Board of Education, there's a thank you from the Lundberg family for the plant settlements in memory of James Snyder's. With that, does anyone have a, a formal board report that they would like to share tonight?
Well, I'll start off. Transportation event last Thursday afternoon, I left some of my notes in the, in my car, but what I, what I do remember is that compared to last year at this time, ridership is down around that fifteen, sixteen hundred kids versus twenty-some hundred kids, right?
Around, between seventeen, eighteen hundred. We were anticipating if this was a non-COVID pandemic year, between twenty-four, twenty-five hundred riders. It is down.
And we are doing okay with bus drivers, but we are really enjoy having a pool of extra ones out there because it's hard to find. As well as, and I think, and one good thing that has happened in this new year as far as pickups is the, instead of an every stop, pick up kids, these multi-stops where you pick up a cluster of kids is working really, really well. It's making, buses getting to the schools on time and it's actually increasing, the kids getting home quicker. And so it's a really big plus. And earlier Jared talked about the new redistrict thing or boundaries for schools in this upcoming year of twenty-one, twenty-two. And did I miss anything else? This is all.
I think you got it. Anyone else have a formal board report tonight? All right. Hearing none, that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone.